Edmaren, would you be kind enough to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call to order. Joanna Lee, please have a little call.
Douglas Beatty.
Here.
Kathy Buckley.
Here.
Michael Hagedorn.
Here.
Edmaren.
Here.
Christopher Mishell. Crystal Palmer.
Here.
Nicole Hooper.
Here.
Mark San. Holling Stone.
Here.
Grant Decker.
May be resolved, I'm sorry. I would like to take a moment of silence to acknowledge the passionate and dedicated service of Richard Levine to Beatty Town Central School District. Thank you. May be resolved that the Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the agenda. May I have a motion, please? Motion. Thank you, Mike. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Notes of states? Resolution. First, we will start with presentations and I would like to introduce Marisa, I'm sorry, Marisa D'Angelo and Team Verdez, eighth grade students. Their topic is "One Book, One Community."
So it may be easier for the board to sit in the front row.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Marisa D'Angelo. I teach her text English in the middle school. A couple of years ago at the English conference, I learned about "One Book, One Community", which is a national initiative that each community makes unique through their book choice and the activities that they choose to do related to that book. The concept of the "One Book, One Community" program is to get as many people in the community reading the same book as possible. And typically when they do it in school districts, everyone reads it from the Superintendent of the Board down to the bus drivers. And they somehow indicate, like in other school districts, sometimes they wear a bun or a pin to show that they're participating so that kids know that it's okay to talk to that person about the book that they're also reading. So I learned about this at the English conference a couple of years ago and my inspiration came from a school district out in western New York called Portville. And they had done one of these, but their district was very small, very rural, and they didn't have like some of the issues that we would have here because we just have a bigger community. So I immediately came back and I talked to Duffy about it and she was super excited about it, but it's been a long time in the making because it is a lofty goal in addition to all the other things that we have to do. So at Portville, they did this project and they did it, just the teachers planned it and they kicked it off with a back-to-school barbecue and they explained what they were doing and they went out to the community. They got as many businesses in their community involved as possible and each one of those businesses put a yard sign up saying that they were participating so that again, and also signs within the businesses. So again, if you went out to eat and you saw the sign, you knew that you could talk about the book there for those people. And like the dentist, he was always posting pictures of himself on the social media sites that they put together, you know, reclining in his exam chair, reading the book. He was having people take pictures and then they would post them on the various social media sites. So it's a really cool experience for them. And so basically what I, what we're doing is we're stealing all of their cool ideas, but then we're making it way better. We hope to blow theirs out of the water actually, and I think that we will. I'm fortunate because I was able to tie it into my eighth grade curriculum and I have some of those students with me tonight. They've been wonderful at putting this project together and instead of just having my ideas, they all have their say and they're putting their voices forward and what they would like to see happening with this, which is great. And I'm using them according to my strengths, so all of these people happen to be very outgoing, so I think they would be excellent presenters. And also every fellow teacher on my team is going to, they either are already helping, like Mrs. Mujera, or they will be helping as we work on different projects. So we have a lot of engaging activities planned. I think that it will be a unique, really cool experience for Beatty Town to participate in this and it'll be fun and educational, which will be nice. You have some things like a copy of the book, there's a pamphlet, just know that that's a work in progress, it's not set in stone. I just wanted to give you an idea of what one would look like and we don't have all of those activities like approved yet, so we're not trying to like, to do that ahead of anybody. So, but it'll also give the families in the community, we'll give them suggestions related to the books like I said, they could do together, like go to Classic State Planetarium or, so we're gonna find local things so that we can include the community as much as possible. They can participate through social media. I'll post discussion questions and stuff like that on social media. And we made, we are even looking into having, there's a traveling planetarium, like a blow-up planetarium that can come to the school, so we're even looking into stuff like that. There's gonna be a kickoff party and then a closing party. So I think it'll be a really neat experience. And at this time, I would like to thank you first of all for your support and I hope that you will all participate with us. And I would like to hand it over to my fellows. We have Macy Lamora, Dana Probst, and Christian Nelson. I believe Christian's kicking it off.
My name is Christian Nelson.
I'm Dana Probst.
And I'm Macy Lamora. And today we're gonna talk to you about "One Book, One Community." Why should Beatty Town Middle School use Hello Universe? First of all, it has won a Newbury Book Award, so it talks about very important topics like anxiety and children and teens. And it also talks about the desire to belong and the desire to want to feel like you are needed. And it also has very important themes to convey to everyone in our community and I feel like everyone should have these feelings that they belong. And there are so many problems in today's society about this, so I feel like this book will really motivate people to want to almost talk to other people about this. And I feel like the book in general will make everyone want to communicate their feelings if they ever do feel like they're anxious or they're just not feeling like they belong in our community.
So why should Beatty Town Middle School participate in the project? Is that it fosters an appreciation and broadens reading abilities. It'll help open discussion about important topics like Dana said, anxiety and bullying. And it contains, it is a cross-curricular project, like math and science and, yeah.
There are many themes that go along with this book as well that have a lot to do with what Christian and Edmaren were talking about. Some of them may be like facing a fear that takes away its power over you or there are no coincidences, which are, that coincidences is mentioned a lot in the book and got lots of themes.
Some things we're gonna do with the project, or that we're gonna also be in the project is an audiobook, which we can use to like, the students can listen to. Window painting, which I don't think is on the windows anymore, I think it's gonna be stickered.
There'll be like a paper and then they'll paint on it?
Paper and then painting. We're gonna have lots of fun and games. We're gonna include an end discussion on read with everybody.
We might have some guest speakers come in that are, they come in to talk about anti-bullying and we'll have volunteers come and read to the kids and then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Your hat.
Thank you.
Did anyone have any questions about it for us before we leave? Yes.
Are other school districts in our area participating in this?
Not that I know of. No, I believe that we will be the first around, so obviously it's a chance for great PR for the district. But yeah, I believe we will be the first, so that'll be awesome.
Excellent. Good job.
Yeah.
What age are we on the list?
No, we performed, it was a little bit below so that it could incorporate all readers. It's about fifth or sixth grade, so we think, like I said, a little bit lower, but typically they do that so that as many readers as possible can be involved with it and understand it.
When you were speaking in your earlier presentation about the need for everybody to belong, it brought me back to one of the great trainers we've brought in here, it's actually Mr. Lambert, brought in a trainer who goes to so many schools. She says what she loves about Beatty Town Central School District is there's a place for everybody with all of our programs. Well, we can always get better, we can always expand on that, so this would be another great incorporation for us. Thank you.
So how's your anxiety at first?
Very high, yeah.
How do you feel about that?
I feel fine, yeah. Much better than expected.
So I told her once, you face the fear and you're actually going, I feel a lot better myself. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice job.
All right, moving on to our next topic. Our next topic is athletics discussion and the future of Beatty Town Central School District's athletic and extracurricular programming. Our presenters today will be Greg Meyer, Coordinator of Athletics, Matthew Vazallo, our High School Principal, Duncan Nelson, the Middle School Principal, and Thomas Tatro, Booster Club President.
And I guess I'd just like to expand on this a little bit. Over the last few years, we've had a lot of informal discussions, maybe one board member or one community member at a time weighing in on maybe things they might like to see in athletics or extracurriculars. And I think it's probably the right time to make this a goal of the fut- a, not the goal of the future, but a goal of the future. And tonight, what I'd like to do is try to get all the thoughts out on where we wanna go as a Board of Education and as a community with athletics and extracurriculars so that as a group or committee, which may be a next step, we can really bring forward some policies or procedures which can be more adopted, which will help lead us and direct everybody to those improvement steps. So the first, the first item up is our current policy. And I think we put that in the board portal and I know that it's online, but I didn't know if anybody had anything that they would like to see changed in our policy. We don't have to state, these are just talking points that I put down, maybe some people added to them. We don't have to state on topic, we can probably jump around if people so desire. And Grant, we welcome your input as an athlete in the next. We're gonna have to talk a lot more folks, it's gonna be a long night. Well, currently, quite much, you know, the policy, maybe we don't have any problems with the policy.
Well, we just, we just did that. We just reviewed the policy actually last year and updated it and obviously we spent a lot of time changing it and making it fit what we're doing now. I know that there's some ideas out there, I mean, some of the things, I looked up some bits of information for you and Mr. Mannix actually put one on the talking points. We currently have fifty, fifty different sports teams that we offer. That's varsity, JV, and modified. In the fall, we had three hundred and forty-three student athletes. In the winter, we had two hundred and eighty-eight kids participate on those teams and that does not include the hockey players that we get from Shazee and from NCCS. In the spring, we have two hundred and seventy-seven, I'm sorry, two hundred and eighty-five students currently signed up for spring sports. So we have a substantial number of student athletes that are participating in our programs. An interesting thing is out of the fifty teams, we have fifty-eight paid coaches. So there's not an assistant on every team. Actually, there are more teams without assistants than, I mean, as you can do the math, there's eight teams, there's eight assistants or something along those lines. Some coaches coach multi-levels, like our cross-country coaches coach. There's two coaches, they coach the two varsity squads, the girls and the boys, and they also coach the modified teams. So we are spread out, I think, very thin when it comes to paid coaches. We're fortunate enough to have many volunteers and with volunteers comes, you know, the same concerns that are out there, you know. And we strive to get every volunteer at least meet a minimum standard for certification that they have to through New York State as a regular coach would have to. But with volunteers, you're looking for people that are working without pay and a lot of times those are parents. And parents coaching their own kids is always, you know, a topic of discussion and it's something that we all are leery of, but we also, when we, when we got rid of, when the Board got rid of the assistant coaches, one of the things that they said that we need to lean more on is the volunteer coaches. So one other interesting thing, I hadn't ever looked at it this way. This year, we will have, including our spring contests, in the neighborhood of seven hundred and seven individual contests that our kids will be participating in. And I think about that and it's a wow factor, like that's a lot of games and scrimmages and odd league games. So we're talking about a pretty big body of work when it comes to just athletics.
So all add to extracurriculars, I counted, it's nice to have a balanced program, right? Beatty Town we strive for that. And currently we have, I think, fifty-four paid extracurricular offerings, so it's very, very similar for athletics and extracurriculars. And those are all paid. But like Greg said, one of the things that's important to know is I think the principals in particular do a lot of arm twisting to fill a lot of those extracurriculars and it's really difficult for people to dedicate the time, whether they're coaching or doing the extracurriculars.
Greg, do you remember when we reduced paid assistant coaches, was that in response to the contingency budget we had way back?
I know it was during a difficult budget time.
Yeah, it wasn't necessarily the contingency as much as it was just that three-year span where we lost eighty-four acquisitions, right?
Right.
Your volunteer coaches, are they, do you have background checks or?
Absolutely.
Hand and fingerprints?
Fingerprints and their, if they're left alone with children, the minimum requirement that a first-year coach is they would have to fulfill. Fingerprints, obviously, there's CPR requirement that we do here. Some of them have a first, the first aid coaches. If they're gonna be left alone with student athletes, they have to meet those bare minimum first aid, or the first, first-year coaching requirements.
And Agencetic did provide this document, which is in the portal, which outlines your requirements to be a certified coach and the steps.
One question I used to always get a lot was, when we have merge teams, what, which code of conduct takes precedence, their home district or ours?
They follow their home district and we, our kids follow theirs.
Okay.
Because when we send our kids to another school, because some, some schools, they would be following ours, like we have the mergers in lacrosse that you're doing this spring. I think we have one on the agenda tonight for modified lacrosse and those kids would follow our code of conduct to go to play at Peru or Blotsburg.
And as far as extracurricular goes, I think I already know the answer, but I wanna ask the question anyway. Do we ever have students from other districts that want to participate in our extracurricular?
Not a common.
Like a French club?
It's near and half that.
No, I know it sounds like an odd question, but.
We do athletics.
Yeah, we do an athletics, so it's something to consider if we're really going to look at athletics and extracurricular equally, how equal are they? And what impact do they have?
We have to use sports now too, as extracurricular, so we just started that this fall. So that is something that's unique, not a physical has, that we're really unique in our area to have that. And we have kids, you know, almost every night playing and matches and so it's really cool that we have that here, you know, we're that progressive school that we're putting that in action. It's pretty cool that we, forty-one percent of our student body right now in the high school are in extracurriculars, that's clubs. You know, you talk about two hundred and thirty-one of our students are participating in one of those clubs on our campus. And that's pretty cool to look at, you know, the extracurricular in our, you know, athletics. Think about how many kids are doing both of those things, that's pretty impressive for a school.
Is that a high school, you're saying?
That's, you know, high school, that's my numbers, the high school. But it's, you're probably talking close to five hundred kids, you know, four to five hundred kids that are involved in something outside of school. You know, and that's, that's our goal. We want them to, you know, hold on to something and grow and build it and, you know, and it's, it's working. That's what's the really cool part is, really digging deep into the numbers, you kinda see, you know, you see that kind of fruition.
We have about, oops.
No, finish yours, finish your.
We have about the same percentage in, in the middle school with extracurriculars in terms of participation. We're about forty percent of our students are participating in extracurriculars. That's National Junior Honor Society, that's, that's yearbook, that's art, that's just opened up, that's participating after school art robotics club. So we have a lot of opportunities that appeal to a wide range of students. We talked earlier about belonging, trying to cater to students and what, what they're interested in, what their niche is. So we offer a lot across the board. We also have student council, so we have a lot.
What's really cool is when I walk around and I see the sports teams, that one day, the first day of practice, the first day of competition, we walk into esports and that's a whole different group of kids. But I think we had forty-three kids sign up for esports, something like that. And it was really nice to hear that when we asked them, hey, what would you be doing if you weren't playing on our esports team, which did quite well by the way, they said that they would just be home. And that's what we're trying to make them wanna be part of a, of a group and belong and be supervised and be a social worker. And they fall under the academic eligibility too, so they're told, and they have to make sure they keep their grades up, they're held to that expectation on our campus teachers, put them on plans if they're not, just like athletic, you know, just like our athletes. So it's kind of a really, you know, seamless transition to that extracurricular.
Good, it's nice to know that they parallel that way. Because they really, I mean, when we talk about them, we really have a tendency to talk about athletics or extracurricular, when really it's activities of students after the average everyday school day.
So a lot of different people have different ideas of what the purpose of these offerings are for the school district. And I'd like to hear the perspective of the Board on what they feel the purpose is for athletics because we can begin to build or improve in the areas that you want some improvement if we know the direction of the majority of the Board, because different Board members might feel differently about the purpose of athletics. And maybe it's the purpose of athletics and extracurriculars at different levels. Sometimes it's more particip- sometimes it's more participation at younger levels and maybe it has a different meaning at the higher levels, but it's a good discussion to have.
So I look at it from a health perspective, obviously. I think if you can engage kids early and, and teach them proper conditioning, then, you know, these are things that we can care for them throughout and that's very valuable. And also, of course, the community aspect and being on a team. And so even where students have individual events, they're still working for the overall goal of their team, pride in their community. I think those are the three important things I see. And yes, it does change as kids get older and become more specialized in their sport or their extracurricular, but.
I would like to add that I was fortunate enough to coach modified football and I was impressed, it's been a long time since I played school sports, but it was, once I got involved, I realized it was much like my experience. Where I was impressed, where I coached, I've coached Little League and I've coached atrio swimming and there's kind of a mold of a kid, but I really liked being involved in the school because there's quite a diversity of kids. You know, you have kids of all different socioeconomic backgrounds playing on one team. And that's one real reason why I really appreciate being part of Beatty Town and the public school system. And it was really apparent to me on the football team and the modified football team, some of the kids were just happy to be there. I can't tell you, one of the coaches said to me, that to me the first day, and I didn't really know what he meant, but as I looked around and I watched kids, they were cheering on their teammates. They didn't, they didn't feel really hard pressed to get game, they wanted to be a part of the team, they wanted to be there. And I knew those kids, some of those kids didn't have a lot to go home to or a lot of support and it was really impressive to me that we could offer that to kids. And I think it'd be great to have every single kid in the district involved in something extracurricular, because it does that kind of thing where it gets them involved and staying busy and interacting with other kids. So it was, it's just such a positive experience, I think, sports or extracurriculars. You know, we gotta do it. And when I first got involved with the Board, you know, seven years ago, when we were having our financial problems, there was talks of cuts of sports and extracurriculars and I knew then it was, you know, something that we couldn't let happen and I know more now that, yeah, it's something we gotta invest in.
And Grant, honestly, you're a student representative, so if you have anything to add and.
Yeah, I think, I think sports provide a lot of motivation for, you know, I think it's almost, how many? Three, four hundred students that participate in them. A lot of students, actually, that's like something they use to even get through the day, you know, they look forward to practice after school, a game on the. A lot of students, actually, that's like something they use to even get through the day, you know, they look forward to practice after school, a game on the weekends, um. It also, one of the largest tenants is teamwork, so as he was saying, most socioeconomic backgrounds, you really learn to accommodate other people that maybe are much different from you, but you're all on one team and you're working toward a common goal of winning and going, progressing as far in that sport as you can. And as you go upper, up through the levels from, say, middle school through high school, as I was saying, maybe the, the, the overall, the, the overall way that the team is managed maybe goes a little bit more participation toward like, uh, geared toward winning, winning a game. But even as that happens, everyone on the team, at least in my experience, has been involved. So like, even someone that doesn't play that much, like me, you know, like during my junior year in football, I didn't, I don't think I touched the field once. But you use that as motivation to get better for the next year, in which I played senior year, and you realize that the hard work pays off.
Grant, you're in a lot of extracurriculars ever since, uh, young spelling bee days, right?
Yes.
And you're currently in the play, right? I see you walking in there.
Yes, I actually, I actually just came here from that.
Yeah.
I was like, oh, wow, it's six fifteen.
So, what's, is, what do you take away from those, what do you feel the purpose of those other offerings?
The extracurriculars, I think, also provide, in general, I mean, a similar amount of motivation, a lot of people look forward to, you know, uh, to debate in terms of model UN, uh, there's a model UN conference on Thursday, there's a Saturday team place at North, uh, North NCCS. And you also, you know, you learn to look for other people at, uh, extracurricular activities as well. So with drama club, you know, it's, that's a, that's a whole different group of kids than, say, I see in sports. And they also have something that they look forward to after school, and they enjoy doing the play and performing for people, um, in April, or in this case, March. What else, let's see, what else, uh, student council is cool, it gets students involved, uh, so student council, in addition to class representatives and class officers, that gets a lot of students involved with, uh, the actual running of, say, an event like prom or, you know, small school dances, um. You learn how to mani-, you also learn how to manage your time and learn how to manage an event.
I know, I had three boys, brought three boys, they were in sports. They went from football to hockey to, you know, the whole, and it really, it made you feel good that you didn't have to worry about them, what they were doing after school. You know, that was, and they were engaged and they were, you know, they were proud of, of their teams they were on. You know, it just really, it really, um, you know, feeling of belonging and, you know, it was, it was really great.
So, my question to you guys is, how, as a district, do we keep creating that sense of belonging? And, um, encouraging students to participate, um, establishing, um, self-confidence? How do you, how, how do you, um, like your junior year, um, where you didn't play, touch the field, as you said, I'll quote you, okay?
Yeah.
You, or you didn't touch the field, but you still maintained a level of confidence. As a district, how do you guys think, um, we can, uh, help our students from kindergarten up, develop that grit and that self-confidence, um, to participate in sports when they wouldn't necessarily be the top dog? Cause it's really hard to, um, I, I think it's hard for students to sometimes, um, attempt things that they've never done before or, um, aren't good at, but still try. How do we teach our students to, through athletics and extracurricular and everyday classrooms to maintain that level of confidence?
I think the first thing we do is we demonstrate it ourselves in, in, in teaching and coaching and, um. I know when I was a high school student here and I wasn't the greatest on the sports team, but I wasn't the worst, you know? It, and it, I still had a sense of, um, the team, I liked the diversity. I think that the school offers an amazing number of opportunities and it reaches every level, um, and like socioeconomic. Cause there's other, there's kids that have the ability to play on these, um, travel teams and this and that, but there's kids that don't, that deserve the opportunity to have that ability to play. So, I think the school itself is doing a great job in providing that. And I think we need to, as, as coaching, as teaching, as individuals, professionals, demonstrate that and just encourage that.
I think, um, coaching is critical, it's where the rubber meets the rug, so to speak. I mean, you can, what I've seen in the school sports that I've been involved in, I, I've, you know, seen, um, really good things. And you can take a kid who is just not a very good athlete and demoralize him, or you can pump him up, do the best you can, he can catch it. And, um, like I said, we had a few kids on the modified team who, some would say, what are they doing there? But they loved being there, and I think a lot of the other guys, the stars, um, we promoted as coaches, you know, those guys are part of the team. And, um, we had a good sense of, you know, family unity within the team. And I don't, I think any of the guys, even the stars, would have missed any of the guys if they quit or felt excluded. I think by the end of the season, we, you know, we had a nice, and that comes from coaching, coaching, coaching. And I think, as we talked in the past quarterlies, how, you know, um, we, I think as a board, we always have to be cognizant and, um, support Mr. Meyer in, in getting the best coaches that, because I think that's, that's critical, off and down.
Yeah, hiring procedures is on number eleven. No, I couldn't agree more. Yesterday, I watched Coach Quatera's team, and a young man made his first basket. But, on the opposite side, I've watched a team this year that destroyed kids. That's hard to take.
And we do, I mean, we are human.
Yeah.
We have a full, well, just like we have a full spectrum of students, we have a full spectrum of adults. And, um, I think that inspiration for this discussion isn't to revamp athletics or revamp extracurriculars. It's, we've done an amazing job in improving the quality of education for the students in our district. How can we take it past two-fifty? How can we make our environment for every single moment that students walk in a positive experience? And that doesn't mean always making the team. Sometimes it's teaching a child what to do when you don't make a team. Or you don't make, or you don't get to play. How to teach students to feel valuable with every piece of input they have, not just the top producers. Does that make sense? I mean, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm not trying to tell anyone half things, what I'm trying to do is inspire conversation. Cause it's really, it's really about, um, wanting to improve the district, because we are, um, I truly believe that we are amazing. And we can always take it up a notch.
Yeah, and the, really, the purpose today is, we've looked and taken a deep dive in so many areas around here, whether it's technology, curriculum, STEM, whatever it is, cafeteria, whatever it is. But we haven't done this in the seven years, seven and a half years I've been here, we haven't done this for extracurriculars and athletics. Maybe occasionally, and maybe in a certain area a little bit, I was very proud to bring back the High School Musical. But we haven't, um, really worked on improvement, maybe because we're so proud of what we do, but we can always be better, right? We can always shoot to be a little bit better, so, or a lot better. And maybe one of the things, I know we don't have, it's just something we've done and it's not a good, good reason to ever say, well, it's something we've always done. It's the way we've always done it, is we don't have a hiring procedure involved. And I'm committed, I was committed when I was hired, the first thing we did was have a hiring procedure for teachers, a hiring procedure for everybody else. But we neglected coaches and extracurriculars at that, um, at a point, for whatever reason. I'm committed to have the hiring, bring forward a hiring procedure, um, so that we can find the best coaches. And it isn't a life, it isn't a lifetime appointment, it's a yearly appointment. And we probably need to figure out, how do we, how do we have somebody who's done a really good job just, um, move on to the next year? And at what point do we have, do we, you know, go back and say, hey, let's take a look at what's out there for this particular program? Whether it's football, hockey, track, doesn't matter.
Or, or like, we're having a hard time.
Plays.
Um, finding, like every district, we're having a hard time finding coaches or hard, hard time finding people for extracurricular. How do we attract them? What can we do as a district to make people want to coach here? And to, for teachers or, um, individuals within our community that have specific talents, do want to share their talents with our extracurricular here? So, um, it's not just, um, we're not just looking at Greg or looking at this. We wanna look at everything globally and, um, and truly, um, in, improve our environment from morning till the last bus pulls in the parking lot.
This conversation's been a long time coming, uh, because we've had lots of discussion at this table about, uh, mental health, growing self-esteem. And when we look at the, the charter for our institution, where the primary focus is about creating functioning, productive community members. That's, that's the job. And as much as I love athletics, and some of you know my background in athletics, you know, we're not, we're not here to produce, you know, pro football players or pro soccer players. But tremendously value extracurriculars as, as a part of growing, um, culture and the grit and the community of, of our kids. So, like Kathy said, with all of these other conversations, we have an opportunity to revisit all the time, everything that we do, and just take another step back and say, you know, how can we do this better? How are times changing? How, how is the world, the country, the state, how are, how are sports changing? How can we leverage that to help our kids? So, I, I know that, at least the coaches that I know, I see them out there all the time. I know ones that put their own money to the kids, um, several of us here are coaches, right? And I give you guys a lot of credit, I see you guys on the fields all the time, I don't know if you guys have the time, you're everywhere, um, and that's great. So, then there's the question is, what can we do as a district to help both people involved in the athletic program and extracurricular activities? What can we do as a district to make you improve your programs? And that's really what the conversation's about, how do we help you make it better? Some of the discussions are, are concerns, you know, like, uh, in modified. And I will say that, you know, Doug kind of pointed out, and it's not about, it's not entirely a negative, but in the past, with limited resources, I, I know that some kids, um, may try something at a younger age and might get discouraged. And, and we all know that when you're really young, you can change physically, mentally so much in a few years that by the time you're even a freshman, you could be a star at a sport, you suddenly you, you were pushed out of. And that's disappointing, right? And that has all kinds of other consequences, uh, reduce self-esteem, nobody like me, that, as opposed to having a more open approach. And I've seen, I've seen kids that were goalies break an arm, and they say, you know, they're the highest division scorer and, you know, those things happen. And I would, I would like to encourage us to try to include as many students as possible, particularly at the less competitive levels. I know there's a conversation about budget, of course, and capacity with coaches and so forth, but it would be, it would be extremely disappointing to have, uh, a team where only one kid gets cut. I think we've gotta try, really try not to do that. Have them be a part of it in some fashion. And, uh, and I think we kinda need your advice and how to make that happen. If there's something limiting to us, then let's bring it to the table, bring it to us, we can have discussion, and you tell us how we can make that, make that happen. I, I, you know, we looked over, like, the summary that Megan went on, on the requirements for, for the coaches, and I see there's two hours and the six hours, and these are, these are critical. There's important things to have. I don't know how much follow-up after a coach has been there for a while, would do that, you know, just refreshers, just like you do for teaching or for any other profession. I don't know if, whether for football or for soccer, there's the national organizations that you can get certified as a coach of that component that enhances you in that field. And a lot of those, uh, national organizations also have a tremendous curriculum for understanding and learning how to deal with teenagers and young kids and all those things.
One of the, one of the biggest, uh, resources for my coaches is the National High, High School Federation, the NFHS. Uh, they have, uh, lots of resources, um, there's a link right on through the state, uh, the New York State Public High School Athletic Association website. There's lots of courses that they take, um, there's, uh, you know, from, if you're a football coach, there's, there's walking techniques right on through to everything that you could possibly do. And there's also, uh, lots of mini-courses that you can do on, when you're talking about the mental health and the mental approach to, to, to the student athlete. You know, some of the certification classes that they have to take, they're a one-time class, but we are continuing to, there's a, there's a recertification of every coach for, for the heads-up in coaching and concussions, there's a recertification in, uh, in your first aid and your CPR. So those areas are recertified, but, uh, you know, once you achieve your licensure and, and do the coursework, there isn't a lot of refreshers, you know? And a lot of that could be workshops and, um, you know, offering coaches the ability to get better, um, sending them to clinics where they get re, re, uh, you know, the fire's rekindled and they can say, wow, I'd really like to do this. Uh, you know, I go to the AD conference every year, I'm supposed to go next week, and I'm talking about different ways to improve my coaches and their ability to do different things. One of the aspects that's on this bullet is coaches' communication. I don't know if some of you have had children, uh, come through those sports programs, and when we introduced the R-School, uh, calendar um, at Beakman Town High School, everybody was really leery about that. And everybody was like, wow, this is a big step, you know, going to the technology that puts all our, all of our programs on this, and it's on one website, and everybody's getting notifications. Now, if we turn that off, people would be lost. But there's a new, there's a new one out right now that's called Sports U, and it's, it's a, it's a communication platform, it's an ability, it's a way to improve communication between coaches and players and parents. Um, Saranac Lake uses it, and interesting enough is today, he had posted on it a picture of our baseball team on our turf, saying, look at how nice it is, a North Country team playing baseball, first day of practice outside. And I can tell you, I was very proud for me to see that on Saranac Lake's posting, but that was just a use of his communication, and he wants the turf up there, obviously. And he's saying, look at, Beakman Town's got it, he didn't name us, he just said a local school, but I mean, it was our kids and it was our turf. But, uh, I mean, there's a lot of ways that we can improve the products that we do, that we put out and the kids, and, um, I think take away some of the stumbling blocks with, with coaches and parents and, and kids. Because I think one of the biggest changes is the, is, is the kid and the dynamic that you're dealing with kids. You know, using your cellphone to communicate back and forth with kids is a huge concern for me. Um, and, um, I want, you know, you tell a kid one thing and a different story gets home to mind, or the story doesn't get home to mind.
Sure.
You know, so, I find that as disemploying a student, I, you know, very rarely do I say, okay, go tell mom and dad what you, what you did today, and not follow up to make sure that they heard my side of the story. A lot of times I put, call them up and put them on speakerphone and say, let's talk to mom about what happened today. You know, coaches don't have that ability to do that, they're limited to time, so ways to help them improve their communication with kids and parents will only make us better, you know, and it's, that's a platform that we can use. I think that's just an example of professional development, of, uh, you know, using technology, you know, in a way that'll improve every, every program that we have.
And, and that has a nice safety component to it also.
Oh, no doubt about it.
To not have personal communication on personal devices, and may it be a school-driven app or whatever, that, that.
Well, the security on that app is, is, that's why Peru and that's why Saranac Lake are on it, because parents aren't allowed to talk to coaches other than through that app, and the athletic director or coordinator can see everything that's said. And they control, it's, it's like a Facebook platform or, you know, a, a Google Classroom-type platform, where you control who's involved in the group. As a coach and as an athletic director, I would have the, the control over each group. And, uh, it's, it's very exciting to, to try to do something like that. But safety is a huge concern, giving out your cellphone number to your team so that you can say, hey, practice is canceled today. We used to, I remember sitting, when I first started coaching, with a phone tray and calling, you know, schools can't, or practice is canceled today, making thirteen phone calls for a, a, a basketball team, I'm sure I called Crystal's house when she was playing for me. Um, so, I, I get it, coaches wanna use the cellphone, and that's what they're using today. But unless we're gonna provide them with a cellphone, you know, we're trying, I'm trying to get away from that, but I gotta give them some other way to communicate.
No, that is absolutely excellent.
Well, Mr. Mannix mentioned it being a board goal, and I mean, there's a lot to talk about here, and so. about here, and so, I mean, not that any of us want more meetings and more subcommittees, but it seems like this is definitely something that we would need to put into a subcommittee and have a, you know, a group of stakeholders, these guys, one or two of us.
I asked, we had a meeting on Thursday or Friday, Friday, and we mentioned to all of our city head coaches that, you know, we wanted to improve and kind of peel back behind and take a good look, and we were going to have, I was thinking a committee as well, maybe a larger committee, because we can break down into a lot of topics here to cover extracurricular and athletics. We can break down into different areas as well.
But I do want to make sure that the, the amount of energy and time that we put into extracurricular also goes, goes into athletics and vice versa. Because we don't want to work, do this amazing thing for one aspect and the other aspect as well.
And that's been a problem here, not necessarily the commitment of the board or the commitment of the administration, but the way that actually penalties are applied has only really impacted, and, and I've been pushing for a while, majority of the time it's impacted the athlete, but not the extracurricular student.
And it should.
And it should, and absolutely should. We can't want to be equal in all ways, but, but some, right? And like, if there is a kid having an ESEC and he is, he or she is the lead in the play, they should have the penalty. And if the penalty is, this is the only play of the year, and you miss twenty-five percent of it, that means you miss it. That's the penalty, right? Like in football, you might miss two to three games, but in baseball, you might miss, you know, get two or three games, but the percentage seems to be, could be a little bit different.
Kathy, I think, to, to your perspective, if we approach this from a leadership point of view, where we have a program, have a strong focus on also leadership training for coaches and, and the club leaders, that will allow also training and oversight for how they deal with students. Because oftentimes, you know, most of the times we usually come up with sports, and as a coach and a parent, it's, you know, my kid didn't play, or, or something that was, that was said by a coach, and because he was upset, because it was happening on the field, and he didn't really mean it, but he shouldn't have said it, and these kind of things. So, so it's about leadership, training for the staff, and then also, in part of that, it, it sets the example for the students of how they should behave, right?
Mm-hmm. That will be expectation.
Just like we should behave up here, as a board, and, and set the standard. So I think regardless of sport or activity, if a big part of that focus is on leadership, I think that'll help everyone across the world.
Can I just ask a question about how ELT plays into, to this? Because my understanding is that some students with ELT are able to have an extra time to get in play practice, and then they can do sports. Does ELT grant, have any discuss, is that appropriate to have with this discussion? Or is it needed for future planning if it's not available?
Yeah. There were, there, I don't see a nexus between any negative issues in ELT going away if it's not available. I think ELT has provided more opportunities, and, and I'm not sure how it works at the, like, for play practice, but I remember at one point during the year, they, or during a year, they could actually practice the play for, at the high school or middle school level during a section of time, but it changed, it has changed at high school and middle school over the years.
Just wondering if it could encourage students to do both? Give, because it gives them that opportunity to do both.
Yeah, that's always the dilemma, and there's one idea that we have had before, it's been bantered around, is maybe saying, we won't have any practices or games until a certain point in time, like maybe a half hour after what we normally do. So you push everything back a half an hour, which would at least give everybody a half an hour to go do something in the extracurricular realm. It's an idea, it certainly impacts sports and starting times and stuff, but it's, it's out of the realm of possibility. Is there anything people want to add for ELT that I don't know how you guys are doing? I see, I see a lot of career cafes, but like, you wouldn't practice drama during the day anymore?
Not like, like during the half period?
Yeah.
No, there's really not the time.
Yeah.
And it's, and it, yeah, for scheduling it.
It's tough to get every kid within that, within the flight there during that time here, it would be really tough, you know, because you have a different lunch period, you know, based on need, based on the pay you're paying them. It's tough. And that, you know, you don't want to have a play, you know, practice if everybody's not going to be there either. You don't have that divide, and so it's, that's a difficult one. It is something we do need to look at, and I think it would help with our participation rates in our, so our extracurriculars, because we do have a lot of students that play sports, and it is definitely kind of, you know, maybe have to choose, and that makes it hard on that student, they shouldn't have to really choose, they should be able to do what they want to do. If they're interested in the play, should go to the play. And if they want to go to baseball practice after, then they should have the ability to be able to do that. And I think that's, that's something that we are lacking right now, and I think that's something we got to really look at moving forward, and how do we do that? How do we make time? How do we, you know, give that ability for, you know, like a rant that kids done practice and now, you know, he's not really playing the sport right now, but he can.
The track's going to start.
Yeah, so the track's starting on.
Yeah.
And as far as the, the district calendar, I'm sorry, I just haven't looked at it, does that include extracurricular activities, or is that just sports that are listed on?
Um, there's, the activity schedule is, is, that's for sports.
Okay.
That's for practices and also. I can, I just want to make a quick comment about ELT. I, I think if you ask my coaches to, almost to a person, that they are, they are very concerned about the length of day that our students go to school. In particularly, my fall coaches, say, you know, we now start practices Monday through Thursday, you know, after three, and those kids are at school at seven twenty-five, and football typically gets done six, at six o'clock. You know, you're talking, they're putting in an eleven-hour day, then they go home and have dinner and do homework. So my coaches have told me that I'm seeing a change in kids because the kids are tired. And I can tell you, the adults are tired, you know? It's getting harder and harder to get coaches that are teachers because they're putting in such a long day, and, you know, then they got to go do a three-hour practice, so that's just something to keep in mind, that I get concerned. My youngest is graduating, and he's had a wonderful experience here at Beaveman Town, and, but I, it's a long day for all those kids.
For the middle school, our extracurriculars are, we do have them on our school calendar, so you'll be able to see when National Gym and Honor Society meets and Student Council, so you'll be able to see those. Seasons are different. Winter season, there's some time because the gym is shared among different teams, so we get some time to do some activities at the end of the day. Like I said, we just started art, and we just started drama hub up again because we were able to find a high, highly qualified advisor to replace Ms. Hamilton, who was fantastic for so many years, but maybe right. So we're able to fill that time, time there. It's easier in some seasons.
One of the other, we're talking about availability, one of the other concerns that I've heard on and off throughout the years, not necessarily consistently, were students that participated in afternoon CV tech that also wanted to play sports. And I'm kind of curious to find out how, how, you know, I mean, it doesn't need to be answered tonight, but how that is working out, and if it's not working out, how can we make, how can we make adjustments so it does work out? But those are the other things I think.
Okay, ELT has helped in that area, because before they would get here much later, now they, they don't, they don't miss as much.
They pretty much make it back. I mean, I haven't had anybody complain that they couldn't play.
Yeah, I'm a little bit out of the loop right now.
So most of them get back, and most of the time those are student drivers, so they can drive back, and coaches don't penalize them, they get their, get to practice when they can, and we make arrangements on game day. CV tech is very accommodating when we have, like, away contests that they got to leave early or not go that day.
On the panel, Mr. Tater, I'm the one to bring up, we did ask Booster Club to be here. We also do have newly, I think, more improved, the Music Alliance, which is nice to have that group back, that group went away when the cuts went away, and now they're back to do great things for the music program. So there's other, there's other groups out there besides the Booster Club, but I wanted, I wanted to have perspective from the Booster Club, but I also wanted to say thank you because we talked about PD and training. I know we have increased our professional development for coaches, but if I go back to when I first arrived here, there was a, a financial void for our athletics in particular, and the Booster Club really carried the weight. They carried the, the burden of athletics for, financial burden of athletics for the district, and they did so much to keep us afloat, and now they, they still do a great, they're great service for our kids in giving them uniforms, extra opportunities, sending kids to tournaments that they might not be able to go to. And just as an example, I don't know how many Beaveman Town kids, and we have a lot of coaches actually sitting around this table, who are coaching at the Jamboree that we just had the first time, that was sponsored by, or that the insurance is covered by the Booster Club. So they do a lot to give our kids wrestlers and everybody.
They cover every hotel for every travel.
Yeah.
You know, for every team that travels, the Booster Club pays for the hotels.
So they do a great job. So you, you guys are invested, and I, and I was, we're wondering about your perspective on what we have now and how can we improve, if you want.
Which aspect? Narrow it down for me.
What are your top, what are your top concerns?
Huh?
What are your top concerns? What are, what are your top components that you think that should be addressed or looked at?
From the Booster Club aspect, I have no concerns right now. My concern right now is trying to get that fundraiser finished. We have, like you said, we had a, we have a beautiful field, we're still building onto that, like, they had a bathroom, obviously, over there, handicap accessible. But as far as the sporting aspect of it, we give, and I'm, I coach here, we give, and Greg can, if you do an extra activity, we, A, support you, and B, give you the time to do it. There's kids that go to CV tech and they're late, and they come, and they know what to do, and we don't penalize them. And that's that. And we, you're, where, well, we're, I'm coming here from CV tech, okay, you know what to do. And they get ready, they, then they, you know, when they're walking, hey, it's a long day for those guys.
Yeah, and the Booster Club actually paid for our buses to Glen's Falls and Potsdam so when sports teams get going, you know, such as, you said hotels.
Yeah.
The farther sports teams go, so any really significant costs that the sports team may incur are covered by the Booster Club.
Approved by the Booster Club.
Great partners, great partners. We can, we got to make sure we include their perspective. We don't want to step on the Booster Club toes. So how about if we do this? We have to appoint another committee tonight, another member to a committee tonight. We could, as a board, make a motion to approve one more board committee, and then we can work with the community to add to that committee, make this more of a shared decision-making model, and break down into groups and, and work on the final document we can bring to the board and improve some of these areas. That sounds like a plan of action.
We have to get involved communities as much as possible.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Our next presentation topic is our 2020-21 school budget. Our presenter is Daniel Mannix, and superintendent, and Jennifer Parliament, business manager.
So I'll hand this over to Chad to start with, okay? Yeah, I think we're going to move the screen. The sheet should be in your. So what we have here is the numbers you've seen before. This is the long-range multi-year forecast for us, and we have a number of numbers that became far more permanent. We're still waiting on the big number from the state education department. We know right now, that number looks like forty-two thousand, which is one line on a, on one coaster from Bosse's. So we're hoping to see something different. If we don't, basically, we have what it will look like, but I'll hand it over to Chad and watch you walk, walk through the numbers for us.
Yeah, so the top part that you're seeing there is the revenue side. So the, the revenues, our pilots are set in stone, that is what it is, and our tax levy, which we submitted to the state as of March first, which is the two-point-seven-six percent. So that, we do have the, if, if something major were to happen, we do have the ability to change that, but you have to ask for the comptroller to reopen and all that good stuff. So as of right now, those numbers are set, we're waiting on state aid, we won't know that until April first, so that really is out of our hands, it's the waiting game. So we'll wait for those numbers to come in. Shared services and other, we, we do, we will look at that more closely as time, this month, as we go through it. And then you get to the bottom, which you can't see. You can also see the appropriated revenues and the fund balance, which we talked about last time, which we did not change from, from February. So, and then we go down to the expenditures, and a lot of these numbers are now. So the salary and retirement mandates have been updated since last time. TRS is nine-point-five-three percent, ERS was thirteen-point-seven. Those are both increases from last year, and then the salaries are also included in there. Jen Coughlin, the payroll clerk, and I have gone through line by line by line to make sure we've captured everybody and everybody's included, and gotten all the little bits and pieces, and minimum wage, we had to account for minimum wage in there, so there was a lot of things we had to go through and update and, and get, get done. So that number is, is good at this point. There's, there should be nothing that changes. Programming, we didn't change from last time, a hundred thousand dollars for curriculum project was in there previously, didn't change.
And let me just expand on that, so somebody might think, oh, curriculum projects are back. That is really for the ELA, that is a hundred thousand dollars this year for the ELA K5 adoption of a new series. We're hoping to find another hundred in remaining line funds to add to that number.
And then the health insurance actually went down from last month because we got our updated health insurance numbers. We had budgeted twelve percent, and it was actually five-point-five percent, so that was good. The other side we have to look at, though, is the Medicare increase, which was quite large, eleven dollars per person per month, and the amount of people we pay that Medicare reimbursement to is a very long, long list. So that was all updated as well, with Jen Coughlin and I working on that, we finalized those numbers as well.
That liability was huge this year. It's important to know that in most variety groups, we've negotiated that long-term liability out of the contracts.
The Bosse's admin was at a hundred thousand, was reduced to ninety-five, that's an accurate number at this point, those numbers came in from Bosse's. CBS, CV tech, that number's still in flux, we're just getting the Bosse's numbers in for our local Bosse's, then we have FH Bosse's and Wishy's Bos, Wishy Bosse's and.
Cat region.
And Cat region. So we're waiting on those, those numbers have not come in yet. And when we get those, we go for those with a fine-tooth comb between myself and Mr. Mannix and Mr. Lambert, and there's a gang of us that look through those to make sure that what we're using is actually something, what we're paying for is actually something we use or need. So that'll be done within the next month as well. The bus purchases have not changed from previously. The debt service did, that negative did go up, which means we're saving a little bit more there than we were previously. So there were, were some changes, but the net value, we were at nine-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand in the red, and we're nine-twenty right now. So the net change was about two thousand dollars.
And we were hoping with, with the health insurance, that that number would go down dramatically, but with all the other factors increasing, you know, here and there and in other places, that number's still nine-twenty in the red. In the red, which that, that was to stay the way it is, we would obviously be looking at making cuts. Um, we're not gonna broadcast those cuts here at the board meeting. But certainly if we get, are in that position, we will, um, have hard conversations with the board and with members of our school community because that's a four million dollar shortfall. The reality is, we very well could receive anywhere between the forty-two thousand and one point five million from the state this year. Although that was much better news prior to what we've seen in the last week with the coronavirus, which I'll bring up during my presentation. Mr. Hagman?
A large jump in C D Tech, C V S, is that because of the capital project, their capital project?
No.
No, no, that was, um, coasters going up. Um, one is we could, the workers comp, the health insurance coaster went up by just a month thousand. Um, the athletic director coaster went up by eighteen thousand or so, fourteen thousand. Um, so several coasters went up by quite a significant jump.
When, I remember talking about our contribution to their capital project is quite substantial. Where does that show up?
That is, we are, we paid two million dollars in eighteen nineteen. Okay, we owe about four point one. So I have two point one more to pay. The aid from the two million is coming in this current year, this nineteen twenty. So we're gonna take that and whatever aid we get, it's eight hundred and seven thousand dollars. We're gonna reinvest and pay back to Bosse's. So we're, we're bringing it down to a little over a million. And what the hope is, that was the plan that you guys approved last year, to if we have enough funding at the end of the year, we will pay the remainder off. If we do not, we will ban it.
So you have an example, one line that doesn't show up in, in the setup is we had a very warm, um, winter this year. So our fuel oil is dramatically lower than it's been in many, many years, right? So there was, there was a nice, um, surplus finishing up here in that line. So if we, and we talked about this at the board meeting, board meetings before, you see our budget's forty-six million dollars. So one million dollars is always a lot of money, right? It's never not a lot of money. But that's roughly two percent on every line that we have. If you could save two percent off from every line, then you would have that left over at the end. Um, fuel oil, for example, will be far, far, far more than even ten percent.
Yeah, yeah, fuel oil is significantly lower due to the bar measures. We're not complaining.
So like that, I need to save money off a teacher line. You may have a teacher who leaves and they're filled and there's a vacancy and they're filled with a sub for a while. That gives us a little surplus there and a little surplus everywhere. Um, rarely do we go over lines. I guess that happens, right? But rarely do we go over a line. So that's, we hope to take the remainder of all the lines and pay off that Bosse's debt with the Bosse's aid and so you wouldn't see it on there. We just try to capture it.
Because really that's what happened in this current nineteen twenty.
Right.
That's, that's the plan, isn't it? It all gets.
Yeah, we don't wanna have any debt rolling into that twenty, twenty-one year. Or we would, but. Any other questions from the board on this? So we're, we're hoping for good news. Um, I think it's a little, it's a little optimistic to think that, uh, under the current circumstances, that we will be able to fill that whole gap that nine hundred and twenty in the red. So, um, I think a month ago, it was looking far different. But, um, we will make sure that we have the least amount of impact to our programming as we possibly can to make sure that that number is right, that number next to us one, we want that number to be there somewhere. Okay? Chad?
At our last board meeting, we, um, reviewed budget. I, I really wish I could tell you the name of the aid. I do not remember any of it. Um, we were seriously disappointed in our allocation of forty-two thousand dollars, even though we are the district that's growing in our area.
It's foundation aid.
Foundation, thank you. Um, has there been any change in that?
No, that's, that's what we're, you know, we're waiting on. So the way that they're calculating, it's a whole smoke and mirrors game with the governor. Everything I hear from our legislatures i- is that they're not going to calculate it that way. But that always doesn't mean good news, right? The proof will be, it doesn't mean the details. So, but we, we are underfunded from a foundation standpoint and there's a lot of schools that are overfunded from a foundation standpoint. And if we were at least to break even in the foundation, that would take a big chunk off that nine twenty, which would be great.
So that's, that's the big priority.
Post-.
April first is when the governor comes out with the, well, the legislature.
So we're looking for two board meetings in April, like normal, and then, um, two board meetings in May. Previously, we'd have more board meetings, but we have, we always have more information prior. There's not much we can do now. We just.
Yeah, we'll work on our Bosse's numbers. That, that'll be our, our goal, get our revenues and then wait for the government.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, when you see cuts, you see nine twenty and obviously the money, the cuts are, the majority of our money goes into human resources. They are our, our large expenditure items. But there's, there's a lot of different money in a lot of different areas. There's, there's, um, s- some money in, um, again, C V Tech or Bosse's not Bosse's lines. There's money in, um, some of the old tri- infrastructure we have here that we could maybe do without. It was a means, cutting this to save, obviously, a, a, a great student program. We're gonna try like that to do that.
Because what we, what we've given you is a complete rollover budget. We have not taken anything out of that original budget from this year. So everything's included as of right now.
Right. You could move, move to, to it, cuts through attrition, number of retirements, but we'll, we'll get there. That's what we do. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Thank you, Karen.
All right, next, um, we have public comments. We have set aside ten minutes for public comment. If there's anyone that would like to, uh, make a comment to the Board of Education at this time, we ask that you come forward, state your need. But before we start that, we're going to have, uh, Mr. Merron give a brief overview of our board policy, twelve thirty, public participation in Board of Education meetings.
Right, we heard this again. I'll summarize it for everyone. So we encourage public comments. Uh, we just wanna make sure that the conversation, the public comments is factual and we keep names out of it, specific people out of it, and we try to be civil and public, according to productive, uh, moving forward.
Good evening. Again. So my name's Robert Burnham. I'm a parent. I'm a resident of Beakman Town. I'm a taxpayer of Beakman Town. I've been in public education for nearly thirty years. So I'm here tonight to ask the question that no one in this district can seem to answer. And I'm hoping that one of you, my elected representatives to the Board of Education, can help and provide me with an answer. On November fourteenth, I received a letter from your employee denying my child the right to participate in a school-sponsored, taxpayer-funded extracurricular club. Due to circumstances beyond my control, I was unable to comment on this letter until now. My question tonight is, what is the Beakman Town Central School District's expected educational outcome by denying young elementary students the opportunity to participate in a school-sponsored, taxpayer-funded volunteer organization? In this letter, your employee stated that you were untimely in the submission of the student paragraph and that, and I'm gonna quote, "This looks like a parental decision." The application was late due to the fact that your club advisors and your building administrator failed to send the required paperwork home in a timely fashion. This is far from a parental decision because as.
Mr. Renshaw, um, just pause you for a second. So this is not an engaged discussion and I know that you, you've made your statements. Now we have received your information that you're discussing right now. And the last I remember, this is, this was engaged with, uh, legal counsel from your side, right? So.
Though, though, those issues have been.
No, no.
Pushed aside.
Right out on the table.
Oh, no, I got letters from the district that says the matter is closed.
However, from your side, it was brought forward through legal counsel. That's where it needs to, needs to be continually pursued, pursued. This is not a place to berate or challenge or.
I want the facts out there because the facts aren't out there.
Well, that's, again, it's about opinion versus fact. So we're not here to, we're not here to say what you're saying is incorrect or correct, but if you already engaged the process with legal counsel, you've kinda set the stage for it. So.
The matter's closed is what it says in the letter. We can say that this matter closed.
But you engaged legal counsel, so you can, you should continue. If you have a, if you have a, uh, opinion based on that document, you should continue the avenue of legal counsel that you started.
With who?
With the district, through your counsel.
The district has wiped their hands clean of this issue.
I, it's not for us to discuss, but if you've engaged legal counsel, I, I encourage you to do so. Continue the process that you started.
And let's, let's just be a little careful. Since he stopped, I'm just gonna add a little in there. Um, we wanna be super careful when we talk about, um, family members, um.
I haven't mentioned any family member except for my child.
Right, I understand that, but you're.
Personnel, staff personnel.
I haven't mentioned any personnel.
You, you mentioned personnel.
Your employee.
No.
You said the building administrator.
Right.
It was clear who you're talking about and it's inappropriate.
Okay, then we'll change that to your employee.
This isn't a game, Mr. Burnham. What you're doing to.
It is not a game, Mr. Mannix. You're correct. It is not a game.
Let's have a civil conversation. We can, we can, we can disapprove. You don't have to approve.
Public comment session.
Yes.
Right.
I have a right to speak.
You have a right to.
Within a specific parameter.
I am in, within that parameter.
Uh, we're just reminding you that. Yes.
Okay, so.
I'd be happy to meet with you anytime to discuss this in private. No one wants to do it though.
Public comment policy, you'll see there's a process for engaging the concerns, which you've already started. So to circumvent that process, to come here again is not, you're not following your own process.
There's no circumventing. The process has been done.
Right.
So this is why I was unable to comment until this time. I would've been happy to comment on this in November.
And, and I'm, I'm gonna be all crazy here and make a statement and I'm sorry if anyone is offended, but a decision has been made.
Good.
So it's done.
So I can't speak? I can't address the letter and, and the flawed information that's in the letter?
Use the same process that you used to bring that forward with your counsel?
What would you like me to do? Would you like me to go to state ed with this and, and bring it to state ed's attention?
You brought counsel to this, right?
We, we had to get counsel involved in this because of the D A S A complaints. Correct.
All right.
My formal complaint was never involved with a lawyer. I filed a formal complaint on my own behalf. When it got to the point where I had to file D A S A complaints, one, two, and three, I had to get legal counsel for that.
Okay, um, and maybe I'm stepping out on a limb again. But in all honesty, the Board of Education does not determine whether a child participates in an athletic organization, a club, or any extracurriculars, or even a specific class. That is done at the building level. That decision has been made. It doesn't go, it doesn't go any far.
Let, let's talk.
So you, you honestly can keep coming back and I understand and I appreciate the, um, the, your level of advocacy for your child. I have the utmost respect.
So, so what's the purpose of the board if I cannot come to my Board of Education, my elected representatives, and bring a concern that I have to my Board of Representatives? My elected Board of Representatives, I might add.
Right, absolutely.
I mean, this is an easy thing for the district to wash under the desk. I get, I get to pitch.
You've done that.
I get that you don't want this.
You've done that. You've done the process, which you should. You did your D A S A complaints. D A S A, the D A S A response was given to you. That's, I, that's not, we don't do that. We don't do any of that. That was processed and given to you. If you disagree with that, that's not within us. You have to follow the process to disagree with it. And that's not here at this table. For neither you nor for us.
According to the district's letter regarding the D A S A complaints, the matter is, and I'm gonna quote, "closed."
Okay.
Okay.
So therefore, there's no complaint. The matter is closed, is what the district letters stated to me.
We're gonna make that decision.
So I have a right to come back and rebuttal what I want.
Follow the process. The process is not here at this table here.
So where is the process then?
It's follow the process in the documentation.
There is no process. There is no process.
Okay, I'll tell you what. We'll make sure that, that.
What, what, what process? The formal complaint process where I go and I meet with the, the advisors, then I meet with the administrator? And then the superintendent has the final, final say and this board is completely washed out of the equation.
Process, you have to contact the district clerk requesting the follow-up procedure for that, right? That makes sense. So you follow, follow the process.
Uh, okay. All right.
I, I frankly, I don't even, I'm not really sure what the next step would be. But I would, my next question for me would be to ask the district clerk what, and follow our attorneys to advise us on what the next process would be to support you as well. It's not something I, it's not a decision I make, right? So the same question you have, actually I have. So follow through, ask the question to the district clerk, and hopefully we all can find out what that process is.
Yeah, right.
I don't believe it.
That's, that's your.
I do not believe it. I do not believe this board has the student's best interest at heart. I do not believe the superintendent has the student's interest at heart.
Okay, we're done. Your pa- public comment is done.
You quashed that a long time ago.
No.
Certainly you did.
Stay within your bounds and we're done. Thank you. All right, um, seeing that there is no one else stepping forward for public comments, um, do we wanna go into executive sessions or continue on reports?
I wanted to go to the executive session. I called for that because I thought we were violating policy. And I thought it'd be good to regroup in executive session so that we can get back on track.
Um, we are going to reorganize the agenda a little bit. We are gonna go into public session and after we come out of public, I'm sorry, executive session.
No, we don't need, my request in one executive session is, is no longer there unless it's yours.
All right, yeah, 'cause I was misunderstanding what you were saying.
Yeah, we need to anyway.
I can handle that one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so, um, let's move forward. We'll go, um, into reports. We'll stay on track of our agenda. Uh, our first report is Superintendent of Schools, Daniel Mannix. Here he is.
Okay, um, basically I just wanted to make the board aware, there'll probably be an article in the First Republic, excuse me, um, tomorrow about the coronavirus and where we are locally, and this is a minute-to-minute, ever-changing situation. It changed, uh, during the meeting, as I checked my phone. But, um, obviously as a superintendent, I've been very clear that I take the responsibility of maintaining the health and safety and educational growth of our school community very seriously. And we've tried to utilize, or not tried, we actually have been very proactive and protective in our measures for the Beakman Town School District. And effectively immediately, we're no longer traveling outside the county for professional development, student learning activities, nor will we be hosting events outside with county, outside the county with visitors, which could impact our primary mission of providing world-class student learning opportunities. Um, it's my hope, um, that I'm completely wrong in this proactive and difficult, these decisions. I know those, uh, who may love to second guess us could have a wonderful time with this. But, um, we were basically the first in the state to push for this action on COVID-nineteen, um, more than two weeks ago. We've tracked the data step by step back when it was just on its onset in China and we continue to take very. and we continue to take very actionable steps from sourcing materials to, um, a bunch of other items which I'll go over. Um, our assumptions so far have been on the spot. So based on the information and the data available to them, we're going to continue taking precautionary steps to protect our school community and reduce a potential burden on our local healthcare system. This pro, this is very important for people to realize that maybe some people have the belief that this is very much just like the common cold or the flu and it's not. They don't build hospitals, um, on the drop of a dime because of the flu. They don't quarantine major cities in, uh, or, or countries when it is a flu. We have to take this situation very seriously. Um, some of the things we've done is we have source products. We've met with New York State Administration at the highest levels. We've advocated vigorously, um, for the importance of this issue with our district superintendent, our state association, thank you, the New York State Education Department, New York State Public High School Athletic Association, and others. We've met with the faculty, each faculty in the school, and our cleaning staff. Uh, we try to, we're trying to stay informed minute by minute on the impact to school districts in New York State and in other states and the effect that this virus is having on its community and on its healthcare system. I've been fortunate to talk to a couple of doctors who work in the healthcare system who are very, very worried and maybe Mike referred this, I don't know. And Crystal maybe referred this too, about the healthcare systems becoming overwhelmed and not being able to provide the respirators that may be needed if, in fact, this upper respiratory, um, highly contagious, uh, virus hits this particular area. So slowing that, slowing that is a, is a primary focus for us. We've communicated with the public. Um, we are definitely preparing for the unknown, both educationally and medically. We reviewed case law, uh, going back all the way to the, the crafting of the Constitution. We've reached out to Robert Hortons over here, to his partner Kemp and Heron, who's probably one of the best New York State Education Department legal minds, um, and received his feedback. And again, we've put a hold on a lot of different travel. And I'm not sure what else we're going to do, but I'm going to side always on the air of caution for our school districts. If you have a concern with that, I'm happy to give you, um, my rationale over the phone or in writing. But it's much like a storm I see coming. And if you see a storm coming and you know you have people that you're sending out into harm's way, you guys would expect me not doing that. And I see that as a very similar situation. That can be very, very frustrating to people who want to go to an athletic department, um, athletic directors conference. It can be very frustrating to an athletic team that wants to go somewhere and they've earned the right to go somewhere. But as I petitioned the New York State Education Department, excuse me, Public High School Athletic Association, to think about canceling events where we bring people from hotspot areas all over the place. We reached out yesterday and put this petition to our executive director to do that. Today, uh, our neighboring state Connecticut with only two confirmed cases canceled all of the remaining sectional contests and state competition contests because they don't want to be responsible for bringing community members that may have this together and then spreading it back into other community members. Um, so that's the kind of advocacy we're going to, I'm going to continue to have, but I'm very, um, I'm concerned for our kids and for the, um, a lot of different school districts. But we're going to do our best to make sure we're prepared and ready if, in fact, we're faced with this here in our school or on our doorstep. So that, I throw that, I'll, I open it up for any questions that anybody may have or perspectives that you may be hearing from the medical community.
The trips overseas for next month, are they canceled?
Yeah, that's a good, so, on, um, I think it was on Monday, I sent out an email, I think I covered Principal Buzio and said I was very pessimistic about going. That was before the first case in Spain. Took a lot of backlash, a whole lot of backlash, kind of sending emails, brought people back in. There's now over 2,000 cases in Spain and the, that group that, um, provided me with backlash has now decided in about, I don't know, 10 days that they're not going to go and that they are going to reschedule that trip. Um, so it's one thing is understanding how this thing moves and there's a tipping point probably for everybody at some point.
Was that Spain and Italy or just?
Spain and Portugal.
Portugal. So it's right next door.
Yeah, Center for Disease Control just put, so that everybody should really be very concerned about airline travel and obviously cruise ship travel.
I can comment on what I've heard through CBPH and, um, like you said, to echo what you said is, um, it's a great concern of the overwhelming effect on this community, um, in the hospital system and ventilating patients who become affected by this. And as you explained to me, I think some people don't realize that, don't hope that it's not going to come here. It's coming here. Um, we hope to stretch out the illness so that it would be manageable. Um, it's going to be in every, I was told it was going to be in every county of every state in this country at some point, but, um, it's how we manage it. And last I knew, we don't even, and I know in our ER, we don't have a swab or test, test fork yet.
That's correct.
There's, there's, um, a company is producing millions of these as fast as they can and then they're going to distribute them to local uh, public health departments and we're hoping Plattsburgh will, will get a certain number of them. We don't know what number that will be. And obviously CBPH will be very much involved, you know, and their ER department will be very much involved with the health department. You know, once this does start to hit our community, but, so there's a lot of unknowns out there still. But, um, I would just say that, you know, I know the hospital system is preparing and there's a team of people working on this and we're just getting updates, you know, all the time.
As remarkable. I just want to add one.
Go ahead, go ahead.
What shows remarkable is today, um, yesterday, uh, around 11 o'clock Cuomo said that if a school, um, has this, they'll be closed for 24 hours and then hours later, he said schools can expect to close for weeks. And then today, they drew a one-mile radius around the hot zone where, um, around those schools and sent it into the National Guard. I don't know if you guys noticed, they sent it in the National Guard and that whole area is now under quarantine. So a one-mile radius in Westchester. It's unbelievable when you think about that. And that's just contained community spread. Go ahead, it's all right.
Yeah, I was supposed to be on trial these, this week for an office and they got cancer. Um, so forgive my ignorance here, but what's the point of having the test anyway if, if it's like a flu? Everyone's going to have it either you're asymptomatic, as you educated me the other day, uh, or you have it. And at the end of the day, there's, the virus is a virus. You can't cure it. So what's the point of the test if you either have it or you don't? Either way, you have to kind of hunker down, rest, and try to get better.
So I, I would say, you know, again, this is changing minute to minute, so my numbers may be out of date right now, but, um, 80% of people who get this, they're going to be okay. Okay? It's the 20% we're worried about. Kids are going to be okay for the most part unless they have underlying comorbidities. It's the 20% of people that we need to be worried about and that's where the benefit of testing comes from. Quarantine is to control spread. If you look at the historical data on this, that's where a lot of the guidelines are coming from, from the epidemiological perspective. So if somebody calls us and they say we have a cough and a fever and/or shortness of breath and we have been exposed to somebody, what do we tell them to do? Stay at home and don't go anywhere. And that will start having an impact on our community, uh, but it does change the treatment for those 80% of people. It's the 20% of people that we're concerned about. How do we manage them in the hospital?
I'd say overwhelming, um, contagion effect of this where the flu is very contagious and every time you have the flu, you infect one more person or just over one more person.
So again, data may be, I think, but three and a half times more effective.
Three and a half.
Three and a half times more, um, than contagious than influenza.
And, and then the mortality rate is about three times more.
Right, but again, that's in certain demographics that's.
Sure, it goes higher.
You know, you're over 80, you have heart disease, diabetes, and COPD, you know, you're.
Yeah, I think that's the, the older demographic that you just mentioned is actually where that 20% lies. So even in that, 80% are okay. And then actually of everyone that gets it, the disease has only a 0.2% fatality rate.
Yeah.
So the vast majority of people are okay, but it's continuing the spread of it. And then, uh, to answer your question about having kids, um, to know if you have it or not, you need the kit in the first place.
The, the, one of the big concerns was the original guidance at the State Education Department was, well, and this isn't attributed, this is, I think, from the Department of Health was, well, you don't shut down schools until like 15% of the kids are absent. And if you think about that mindset, you think about that just because the kids aren't impacted educationally, that might make sense. But I think of all the retirees, we have all the subs, all the older employees we have that may be the custodians or whoever else, it's not going to be okay to have the kids come in knowing that they are running a 15% to 20% risk of potentially dying because we didn't close school. That's just unacceptable.
And anyone that would contract at a school is likely going home and spreading it to anyone they see in the next, yeah.
So, so let's go back to the academic side of this and just, let's just talk about the flu, the influenza side. Um, I know my kid, they want, her daughter wants to be at school to, she doesn't want to miss her classes, the press to do this. And, and if kids miss school after a certain amount, they get stressed. She gets, she wants to go to school. She wants to be able to be there. But because you start pushing those days of you're not supposed to miss so many days, that makes them get anxious. Actions are stressed about going. So, so we, we may be promoting kids to be in school unknowingly because they're high achievers and, and helping spread the flu. So is there, is there something that we should look at to modify something like?
Well, we did, we did reach out to the admin team and said, we went to cancel all perfect attendance awards. I know my son one time wanted that so bad. He didn't want to miss school. Like we, that does try, attendance right now, we had a meeting today with Principal Buzio and we track attendance at every meeting. We didn't even talk about it today because I don't, we don't want, you know, it's, to me, it's a non, it's a non-conversation. Somebody said your attendance is down, I'm like, good. They stayed home because they were sick.
Right. Okay, glad to hear that.
Any other discussions? Any other perspectives?
Um, so that's your report?
That's all I had. That was the budget.
Business Manager Jen Perma, is there anything else that you would like to add?
No, I'm done. I'm doing my role for you.
Okay, all right. You did a very good job.
Thank you.
Um.
You overshot our COVID.
Um, ex officio student board member Graham Deckard.
So at Cumberland Head, the annual family movie night and raffle will be coming up this Thursday. Donations for the raffle have been coming in and there will be two grand prize winners that will receive a new bike. Cumberland Head has been invited by the High School Drama Club to watch a preview of the musical Cinderella, which is the drama club that I'm working on right now. Students from Cumberland Head will travel to the main building on March 19th for the performance and New York State ELA tests are scheduled for the end of March. Uh, grade three through five teachers are busy preparing students. All teachers are committed to preparing students for the academic task and making test, testing days as stress-free as possible. Moving on to Beaventown Elementary, the Beaventown Elementary School with the help of building sub Chris Cabrera entered a video into the CVES I Stand Against Bullying video contest. This year's entry starred several fifth grade students and the entry actually won the contest. So congratulations. Students will take part in the upcoming award ceremony to be treated to the royal red carpet treatment. Beaventown Elementary is gearing up for the upcoming New York State exams as well, um, in ELA and math. This year, to help with participation and to excite students in grades three through five, teachers have come together and put on a, come together and put on a short slideshow and assembly for grades three through five that was filled with positive messages and ways to put their best foot forward and to show they know, uh, what, what they know about the upcoming exams. Next week, Beaventown Elementary kicks off the Big Change Roundup in support of the Vermont Children's Hospital. Their goal is to raise $2,000 in one week. When students hit the $500 mark, they will have a school-wide hallway dance party at the $1,000 mark. Beaventown Elementary teachers will take part in a being boozled game. At the $1,500 mark, Ms. Paquette's hair will be dyed with rainbow colors and she will wear a unicorn horn.
How much? How much is that?
My students are very excited for this.
And at the $2,000 mark, Ms. Paquette will kiss a goat.
Nice. While wearing a unicorn horn?
Maybe at 20.
How do we get other administrators to participate?
Maybe at 2,100. Okay. Uh, so for the middle school, there are 50 students inducted into the National Junior Honor Society on March 9th, uh, just yesterday. The mentoring program is up and running in the middle school. There are 15 Plattsburgh State athletes mentoring the middle school students each week. This opportunity is made possible through the Gear Up Grant. Instructors from Brilliant Pathways facilitated STEM and healthcare activities with eighth grade students. Art, art enrichment began last week. There were over 30 students in attendance. Middle and high school students will be walking the red carpet at the, uh, the I Stand Against Bullying Awards on March 12th. The event sponsored by the Regional Task Force Against Bullying and Champlain Valley Educational Services showcases these videos made by students at schools around the region to combat bullying and reinforce positive behaviors. This month, teachers will attend professional development workshops at CVES. The workshops will provide teachers with the opportunity to collaborate, network, and share expertise with area district colleagues around the New York State Next Generation ELA and Math Learning Standards. Moving on to the high school, the 25-week progress supports were completed this past week. Students and teachers are working extremely hard to prepare for AP exams in May and the region's assessments in June. Seniors have finalized the college applications and the FAFSA and will be making the college decisions in the upcoming weeks, including May. Our high school, Maldoun, hosted five area schools on February 12th. Students from all over the area came from Beavent, came to Beaventown to interact and discuss important world issues. A student took the roles of, uh, of delegates throughout the day and represented the campus extremely well. On March 19th at 6:00 PM, March 20th at 7:00 PM, and March 21st at 7:00 PM, those are dates, you should write those down. The Drama Club will be performing Cinderella in the auditorium. Students and advisors have been working extremely hard over the course of the year to prepare for this production. Come out and show your support and enjoy a wonderful show. What just happened? Okay, the high, so next, uh, the high school has finalized and confirmed 24 students for a Saturday weekend SAT review course for students who are either taking the May 2nd or June 9th exams or just want preparation for the college, college entrance exam overall. These sessions have already begun and will be every Saturday leading up to the exam, alternating Saturdays between math and English preparation. Principal Buzio went to CV Tech and shadowed Beaventown High School students. Uh, he always looks forward to this experience and being able to interact with students within the CV Tech program and spending time with students, uh, in those classrooms. Principal Buzio, Mr. Horn, and, uh, who's the tech teacher, and Ms. Krone, the agricultural teacher, met with Clinton Community College Vice President for Academic Affairs, John Coell, to discuss a new partnership. The partnership will award students seven certifications through Snap-on and the Certified Productions Technician Test Certification, which is an industry-accepted certification that tests students in four key areas that are all highly relevant to advanced jobs in manufacturing and production. Uh, those areas are safety, quality, safety, quality practices and measurements, manufacturing processes and production, and maintenance awareness. Students will also receive three college credits through Clinton Community for passing the exam. Additionally, the partnership will tie several already offered agricultural and tech courses for college credit through Clinton Community. On, on Thursday, March 12th at 7:00 PM in the auditorium, come out and support students at the pop concert. Uh, I'm going to read off the dates of Drama Club again. There's also a drama production of Cinderella, March 19th at 6:00 PM, March 20th at 7:00 PM, and March 21st at 7:00 PM. I hope you didn't miss those. Come support this, uh, these wonderful extra, wonderful extracurricular activities.
I wanted, I, I did want to point out that the, one of the last segments you read was about the college credit and the Snap-on tools and the certifications that we worked out with Clinton Community College. And remember, I think it was Justin Gardner's second year, we were sitting there at Clinton Community College with a whole host of different people. Everybody's changed since then. But for Matt to be able to get that done with Clinton Community College, it's never easy. It's a lot of hard work, but for that to happen for Beaventown kids is awesome. So that was great work that started a long time ago, but to get that across the goal line is perfect.
Excellent. Nice job, Deckard.
I have a question. The Model Student that we hosted, where, where did we have that? In the gym or?
Uh, so, so three, so there are three different committees in it. So one committee, the largest one, which is special political, is held, was held in the auditorium. Uh, climate change was held in the Distance Learning Center and, uh, legal was held in the library.
I was just curious because.
And next.
This space wasn't.
Yeah, this wasn't completed yet. Originally, legal was, legal committee was going to be in here. So I'd assume next year, probably will end up in here.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I hope so. I wish this was here when I was.
Yeah, it's almost done.
Yeah.
All right. Moving on, the next is committee reports. Um, we have audit committee and operations. I'll start with audit committee. Um, audit committee review. Um, audit committee reviewed and discussed the January twenty twenty, um, financial reports as submitted by District Treasurer Saul. Um, she gave us a break, um, a brief overview of our financial reports and, um, the increase in revenues over expenditures as compared to our previous year. We discussed lottery aid, rental and real property revenues, and CPSC tuition, tuition revenues totaling, um, approximately six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. There has been a decrease in the expenditures compared to the previous year due to, due largely to the payment of the one point four million dollar tax settlement in the prior year. We also, um, discussed, uh, increases in various other costs such as health insurance and payroll expenses for a net decrease. All of these factors equate to a net increase, but I kinda feel like, um, that may have changed since our meeting after our budget talk. We had, um, a discussion concerning our food service program. As of today, or as of the date of that meeting, we had a total breakfast, lunch, and dinner, um, served throughout January twenty twenty. Were a hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight breakfast, a hundred and twenty-seven, five hundred and sixty-nine, um, lunch, with a hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and eleven snacks respectively, so. Although there were no increases in those meals, um, served, uh, on the average daily participation increased for both breakfast and for lunch over the prior year. So even though it was kinda hard to say that our numbers didn't actually change, but they did change. So there was an increase in participation, so. Discussion, um, was also on CPSC programming and expenses. Revenues, including, um, an addition of a pre-K classroom, our, our CPSC reimbursement rate and overhead expenses. And our next meeting will be, um, March nineteenth, two thousand twenty, twenty, at seven forty-five A M. That's all I have for audit committee. Mike, if you'd be kind enough to give us an update on operations.
Okay, operations, Matt, uh, March fifth, and, um, I apologize for not getting out my, uh, meeting notes until late last night, so you didn't have the opportunity for your reading pleasure until, unless you got it early in the morning and Joanne put that in the portal. But, um, anyway, I'll just summarize it real briefly, I won't take too much time on this. But, um, obviously, our big things are the EPC, the Energy Performance Contract, the capital project, and the capital outlet project, so. You missed, well, the, as far as the Energy Performance Contract is concerned, it's, it's done. However, um, Tetra Tech and Rick Mandel is a guy who's been very, um, very effective and efficient for us. Is still working with Siemens or holding Siemens to the fire on debits and credits, the final, uh, what we owe and what, um, what work they did. And once we get final clarification, he approves it and checks off the boxes because he's the guy that knows and discusses with Mr. Mannix, then we'll write them the final check. So the work is done, we just, it's not quite, um, closed out as far as payment is concerned. And as far as the Energy Performance Contract, I asked Ms. Parliament about how, how's it looking? Well, um, quite clearly, she said to me that we obviously need some time to go by to compare, um, you know, those numbers and the improvements that the Energy Performance Contract is gonna realize with, you know, all the energy efficiency improvements that we made compared to previous years. But she says we already have, are seeing improvements above and beyond, even though we had a, a gentle or easy heating season. And Mr. Noonan, um, also said he very much liked what he has seen with Energy Performance Contract. Regarding the capital project, obviously, we're here, this is the, you know, this is the, the last phase of the capital project. And, um, Mr. Scott, um, reminded us that we felt a lot of delays and was frustrating at times with the phase three of the capital project, which, uh, involved this room. Yet, if you think about it, it was less than a year ago, we were out there breaking ground. So in a year, um, really, actually, a lot has been done, and, um, and the capital project is coming to a close. All the work is done, however, there is a punch list that's in the, um, in the portal that show a lot of little things, and, and, well, some things are big, but some things can't be done until the ground falls. Like improving all the landscaping and, and the green spaces that the construction has torn up in. And they're gonna clean up that staging area behind the turf field and make it a nice green space that they can use for soccer or other fields. You know, that's a big part of it, but basically, the project's done. Another interesting thing that I thought he brought up was there's, um, we hired a third-party independent commissioning agent, a guy named Carl Otto, who's an engineer, and he's, he's really, um, a professional in checking everything in the capital project. I was questioning if, you know, Wyatt and our general contractor, I thought that's what our general contractor was doing, but I guess, uh, it was clarified to me that our general contractor, UW, UW Marks and, uh, Mr. West, he's on all the, the contractors and the subcom- and the subcontractors to make sure they're doing and they're continuing work and they're on schedule and they're following code. But as far as the, um, uh, getting what we paid for and the functionality of these things and, um, the quality, that's something that, um, Mr. Scott clarified is, and Ms. Parliament, that, uh, this, this, uh, third independent commissioning agent was really helpful and, and worth every cent, I guess.
Yeah, it makes, it's nice to have somebody else independent.
Yeah, so we hired him, he has no connection to anybody else, so he's looking out for our best interest. And, um, and so he was very useful. We went through the punch list, you can take a look at it, too. At the end of the capital project, I realized Mr. Scott was sitting next to me and how, how, uh, much of an asset he was. He's produced all those, um, updates for us and the pictures that he gave to us, but not only to us, posted on the website, so everybody in the community could see them and get updates if they chose to. But really, I mean, how could we have got that done? I mean, Mr. Mannix is really busy with so many things, how could we have got that done without Mr. Scott? You know, so I appreciate, I thanked him for his service, and, um, and he's pretty much done.
So he still is a part-time ELT grant coordinator for us, and he's finishing up some of those punch set items, um, so he will be around. I know that he was asked to do another similar project, and he respectfully said, no, it's too much work. Smart man. It's a lot of work and I can't, you know, I, I thanked him immensely because there's just no, if you take a look at the last capital project that was completed here and all the things that weren't caught, um, it was because we didn't have that kind of oversight. It was probably, again, just the normal staff trying to catch it. But to have him overseeing everything as paid, and you're only paying twenty percent of his amount, right? Because the rest is funded through the state government.
And even that twenty percent value, his documentation helped us with, I mean, some of the other issues that later we had to use his documentation to verify.
Time and time again.
I mean, if any of you ever had any residential projects, you know, you put in a heater, you have a roof done, you say, oh, sure, just go ahead and not look at it, or, you know, no, you know, you gotta check references and make sure that guy knows what he's doing. And, and you talk about an eighteen million dollar capital project, I mean, that's above any of our scopes. So to have Mr. Scott and then a G C, and then this other guy, Mr. Otto, was absolutely necessary. And that's one thing I really learned from this project is, you know, he can't, as much as we'd like to have faith in our human, you know, our, um, fellow man, you know, when it comes to dollars and cents, people have to make sure we're getting what we pay, what we pay for. Lastly, the capital outlet project, as you guys all know by now, it's a, you know, an annual hundred thousand dollar project. Two thousand nineteen was earmarked for doors at C H S, they're all ordered, it's all been, you know, evaluated and, um, and audited, and, and those doors are coming and gonna be installed in May. Two thousand twenty project, um, we realized we needed to do the same thing, um, at Beatty Town Elementary. They're gonna get new doors, they have safety upgrades, and they have some element of, uh, air balancing and improvements, anyway. Unfortunately, um, that's at a little bit of a pause because our architect, Tetra Tech, um, has those plans and are sharing them with us right now, but we're working on what to do about that. And perhaps we'll look to another firm to help us move ahead on that project. And then two thousand twenty-one, um, it's been proposed that we'll, uh, look at replacing the middle school bleachers.
And maybe, uh, a door, security door, but that depends on the vet code, that's what.
A door separating Beatty Town Elementary from the middle school.
Yeah, so it's a vet code issue and it's a regulation issue, too. So it's comp- it's, it's easy, the project would be, it's very complicated.
But that's, that's operations.
Do you want to have any questions for Mike? May be resolved that superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the following minutes. May please have a motion.
Motion.
Motion Nicole, second.
I'll second.
Mike, any questions or discussion? All in favor? No, abstains, resolution passes. May be resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the CPSC, CSC, and five oh four recommendations stated three ten two thousand twenty. May have a motion, please.
Motion.
Mike?
I'll second.
Crystal, any question or discussion?
No.
All in favor? No, abstains, resolution passes. May be resolved that superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, resignations, appointments, retirements be and are hereby approved. Motion, please. Motion, thank Pauline, second? Mike's got it, Mike's second.
Yep.
Any questions or discussion?
No.
All in favor? No, abstains, resolution passes. May be resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school calendar, athletic mergers, CVES board member election, and rescind trip to Spain, Portugal, be and are hereby approved. May have a motion, please.
A motion.
Thank you, Mike, second?
I'll second.
Pauline, question or discussion?
Yeah.
Okay.
The calendar. I had, I had some questions, and Dan was very good about articulating on the complexities of this calendar. And, um, and somebody else had a question online about, um, the holiday as well.
The April break.
April break? I think the question that was placed online was, um, replacement of the April break instead of during the Easter, what's, how does that work?
I think that is over Easter.
East, uh, let's see here.
Easter's the fourth, for sure.
Twelfth, twelfth is, uh, Easter Monday. Good Friday is the ninth. And it's the same this year.
Next year?
Next year, Easter is on the fourth.
Yeah, it's on the fourth.
It's on the fourth?
Yeah, next year, on the twenty-one.
Next year?
Yep.
So, so it is during the Easter week?
Correct.
So here's a question. All right?
Well, and then I'll just expand on it, because sometimes it's not, it's not always driven by Easter. But there are bargaining units in the BOCs that have written in there that they have Good Friday off, so they, they are cognizant of that. But that, you see those three dates in April, the twentieth, twenty-first, twenty-second, teachers become very, um, anxious and jittery as maybe parents and kids do. If you move that break right there where they are off for a week or five days, they come back and have one day in ready for the tests. So three through eight tests, that, that places a factor.
Okay, that's a good, good point.
Yep.
Yes.
Did have the question on the March eleventh and twelfth, they seem kinda like thrown in there. I mean, and obviously, we have, this coming up this week as well. We have a half day this week as well, and then we have Friday off, right?
So, so it's the same type scenario, right? And that's driven by, um, contract agreed to by, um, whatever superintendent back a long time ago. Cause I looked through the contracts and I wanted to blame somebody and find out who is, who is responsible for giving away a professional development day. So, and I couldn't, it goes back to the first contract that I could find.
So we don't know, what, what is, so what is the, do we even know what the intent was of focus?
Um, to give the, the Beatty Town Teachers Association a say in the development of their profession, which is a good idea.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to.
No, of course.
There's just, there's just, you have to cram so much in into three days now instead of four days. And I think for a long time, people weren't really worried about the regulations. They made, they had a lot of half days and maybe even more professional development days. I think people in the audience can remember days like that around here from years gone by, super tests gone by. But the other, the eleventh is a half day because that's the end of a trimester. That's a parent-teacher conference, um, day as well on the eleventh.
Right. Okay, and so that's the same as the twenty-fourth of June. No, that's a half day. Why do we have that half day on the twenty-fourth of June?
Um, that's driven by a contract that was agreed to probably the same time the, the professional development day was granted. There's the, by contract, that's really odd, maybe the oddest language I've seen, where they give, and I think it's because they used to just give a half day, which was a violation of the regulations. They give half days that whole week, but somehow, somebody negotiated and agreed to giving the day before the last day of school shall be a half day, that's the language. There it is.
Or whatever reason.
For whatever reason.
Okay, well, then they might be.
Closing up school, I mean, closing up your room.
There might be some good reason, huh?
Yeah.
Cause I've had, also I've had questions, and this is not a new one, with the beginning of school. You know, we have, we have people that, and obviously, teachers have summers off, a lot of them do, but a lot of families go away for the Labor Day weekend, and then, and then to come on Friday and then start again on the eighth and have people be here on Friday, so. And I know that, yeah, to have so many New York State-driven days.
We have a contract, too, that the community pays for, the hundred and eighty-one. So New York gives us, says you have to have a hundred and eighty, we have to have a hundred and eighty-one days, right? So that's why we start on the second, we go the third, and then we believe, I say we, we've had a lot of discussion for years. We like the idea of the kids coming in at least for one day, um, and kinda going through the classroom routine. Get to know your new teachers, and then the high school and different, there's a big welcoming ceremony at every, every school. You know, if you go up front for Cumberland Head or BES, it's always very festive, it's wonderful. So that first day of school is a, is a, is a wonderful day. There's a lot of learning that goes on, but it's not your, you know, deliverable type of learning, for lack of a better term. But then when they come back on the eighth, you're ready to go.
How is, how is our attendance on that Friday? Does, does the holiday ever affect our attendance?
So everybody wants to be here on the first day of school, and so, no.
Okay.
We, we, that to be, uh, no, no, we, we have looked at it before, we've looked at attendance rates, and, um, because you've brought that up before, and we've never really seen a way to, um, have a calendar where we think it would impact better attendance based on the calendar. Uh, look, I'll take that back. This year, so before, because of the way the regs were written, you couldn't, you had to have, there's still violations of the regs, which was the most amazing thing. So you had to have school on Monday and Tuesday before the Thanksgiving break, which is a violation of the regs, but you had to have it or they wouldn't count it. So, um, now you can, now it's all based on days and hours.
So we do have, okay.
So now, if you look at that week of Thanksgiving, because a two-day week or, or a day and a half week is a hard, is not a sure, great week of learning. So now, most of that week is, is off for kids, um, if not all of that week, and then, but the week. And then, but the week before is now not chopped up, so you have a full week of learning prior to that, so that's a better week.
Is there any, is there any concern that, that people want to take that whole week and not really be available for, for that parent-teacher conference on the twenty-third?
Absolutely. But we do have really good participation rates at, certainly, historically, the rates at the elementary are always really strong, and as you, as you grow older or meticulous, meticulous, whatever that word is through our system, the parents become less involved.
I, I just ask because there have been, there have been people that have come to public comment and questioned our, our lack of discussion, so I appreciate the discussion members.
Yeah, there's one big clause down here, down the bottom left hand corner, which Joanne will make sure to always put in there, that this calendar is subject to change for not a lot of reasons. Coronavirus could clearly change our calendar.
It could rearrange everything.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the calendar, guys?
Thanks for answering my question.
All right. Okay. Seeing we have no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
No? Abstains, resolution passes. Annual district meeting, whereas the Beethamtown Central School District, the district, is a local agency pursuant of New York State environmental, thank you. It's a very long list. This ends on page eleven fourteen. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, may I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion?
Could you just summarize what these are before? Just very soon. So it's in, it's in the court. Do you have a content of this?
Yeah, he's getting them. Proposition one, proposition two.
Do you have to wanna know my proposition one, proposition two?
I just.
And three?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Proposition one is approve budget. Proposition two is approving the buses, and we've talked about that. This year, it's four buses, and that's because we have more kids than we had when we had the study, and we want more field, until now, we want more field trips. And we also have a, sorry, we have, not a short bus, but a wheelchair handicap accessible bus, which is a slight increase for one year on one bus, twenty grand. And then Board of Education members, we have three members that are gonna be elected this year. They're a vote, and that's the location. Some people ask, are we gonna have it here? I didn't wanna change the location and have people be upset that they go to the high school, and so maybe in subsequent years, we can have it in here, but I didn't wanna change it right now. And is that, I think that.
I think it was just the three propositions.
Oh, I get a question.
Public hearing is May twelfth, so that will be, the public hearing will be in here. Usually, previously, it was in the auditorium. A couple times it's in the line.
This is a little out of order or context, but I've had a number of people ask me how, is there gonna be an open house or something today?
Yeah, so we would like to have an open house, and I'm thinking that the open house would be, it might be best to have it in the, in the summertime where we can really allow kids to be on, do the whole thing, have kids see the elementary, this bu, this building, the fields, and do different, have different activities. Maybe we compare that with something that's happening with the Beethamtown Bicentennial, which is a very active schedule. People will be in the area.
I had a number of hearing members ask.
Our discussion back to the resolution.
I'm sorry.
We can put that in this one.
Fair enough.
All right, sounds good.
Just a couple more things, petitions are due on April twentieth, by PM.
Also, we did have, we'd like to amend this, I guess. Well, maybe we should, it's up to you guys. We can amend the resolution to have the public hearing on May twelfth to the Learning Theater, but currently, right now, if you look on nine of fourteen in the middle, it's at the middle school, high school library. So we either amend that now, or we can just stay there and do all the rest of the meetings here.
Have the actual vote? No, that's.
That's not the vote, that's just the hearing where we go through the final budget. People usually come and ask about, even a couple people always have a couple items that are.
I'd like to do it here.
So we would just make a motion.
A motion to amend, to have a here?
Yeah, motion to amend and change the middle school, high school, library to the Learning Theater.
Need a second.
Does anybody second that?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Crystal.
All right.
We need a while for the amendment.
Oh, sorry. So we have our motion, we have our second. Any questions concerning amending the location of the May twelfth budget hearing, right? Any questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
No? Abstains, resolution, amendment passes. All right, so I'm gonna.
So Crystal has to, motion as amended?
I will, a motion as amended.
May I have a second, please?
Second as amended.
All right, excellent. Questions or discussion?
No.
All right. Mike, please have a roll call, roll call vote, Joanne.
Douglas Beebe?
Yes.
Kathy Buckley?
Yes.
Michael Hagedorn?
Yes.
Ed Maron? Christopher Micho? Krista Palmer?
Yes.
Nicole Pupor?
Yes.
Mark Sam? Pauline Stone?
Resolution passes. Moving on to financial resolution, may be resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolution on this consent agenda, financial reports, be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion, please?
A motion.
Thank you, Mike, second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Pauline. Any questions or discussion? Joanne may have a roll call vote, please.
Douglas Beebe?
Yes.
Kathy Buckley?
Yes.
Michael Hagedorn?
Yes.
Ed Maron?
Yes.
Christopher Micho? Krista Palmer?
Yes.
Nicole Pupor?
Yes.
Mark Sam? Pauline Stone?
Yes. Additional items to discuss? Or, sorry, resolution passes, additional items to discuss. We're talking about a potential open house for the district.
Well, just in the summertime. Hopefully, it's gonna be a, I think there's a parade for the Beethamtown Bicentennial or, or, they have a lot of activities.
A field day.
Field day. And I know they're, they're gonna have, there's a presentation on the school district is incorporated into that, so opening up the district on a day when people are in the general area might be kinda cool to see the district now to when they went to school. So not a specific date, I think it would be really nice to do that, and then have an official open house. I think it was the last board meeting you approved, so that we can allocate just a little, yeah, minor amount of money for like hot dogs or beverages or for taking that donated, which we were trying to.
If we could pull out the little stickers or boards that have the, the general info on the capital project?
Yeah, that's right. Good idea. It'd be, it'd be a fun day.
Okay.
We just have a day yet.
Okay, go ahead.
Real quick, we got, I got emails yesterday from NISBA. It's the yearly resolutions survey, takes five minutes. You guys can, or your nose, click on it really quick, allows you to put your two cents into the New York State issue, influence, how we should do this, New York State Education.
That's.
I'm initially haven't discussed, it's appropriate to bring up right before public session. I think I'm gonna be doing my job if I didn't once again, and I'm not trying to chastise anybody, but it's really food for thought, because I think it's highly appropriate. And we've been in this space now for two years. For two years, that didn't happen before, but for two years, we've had people either on one of these mics or on that mic, coming and saying things about people in public session that should not be tolerated in any way, shape, or form, especially when they recall, when they're talking about my employees. As your employee, I'm telling you that they, when they hide behind, not saying a name, but they say two female fifth grade advisors, or the principal at the BES school, or the principal at Cumberland Head, there's not multiple ones, that is talking about a person. They can say whatever they want about me, I get it, that comes with the territory. I'll tolerate that, that's fine. And they can say things that they disagree, I disagree with their position, I disagree with this that this person has, I disagree with their decisions, I disagree that their kids take field trips, totally acceptable. But to bring up things that are inappropriate and really calling the question of somebody's character because you have open mic, it's gotta be shut down. I, I, I think it makes it hard for people to want to work here when they show up at a meeting and somebody basically, and I'm not saying this happened tonight, but it's been happening for two years, clearly, there's been tons of slander has been said in this room, right? It's gotta stop. It's gotta stop, and we gotta pull out all stops. That's why I was asking to go into executive session. Again, I'm asking for your help, I'm not chastising, but our employees deserve better.
Well, since we're kind of on the topic, I think that as a board, you know, that there's, there's policy and there's New York State law that requires us to protect the students and the staff. And we discussed that in the past, and I think that the board should have a backbone to, just as people try to defame or imply that they're being defamed, I think we need to have a backbone to stop that in a legal fashion as well. Because if, because if, if bad information is being put out there to the public that's erroneous about a district, it gives us a bad name, we can't just sit here and just take it. I think that the district has a responsibility, we should, to, to address it and go after it just, just to say, and that's my question.
One of the things that we, just to go in a slightly different direction, that we've kinda talked about on and off in the past, is changing how we do public comment. And that doesn't mean eliminating public comment, but there isn't a reason why we can't structure in a way that creates a more positive environment. May it be, public comment is written in advance and read by board president, vice president, board member. May it be, public comment number one is about this type of issue, public comment number two is about another type of issue. So I think, I think we've kind of thrown that around throughout the year, and I think that it's really hard in, from my, in my seat, to tell someone before they sit down that you can't speak because I know you're going to say this, I don't have a right to do that. I have, I feel like I have, unfortunately, I'm, I'm in a position of having to be react, reactionary, but by then, the damage is done, and it's very frustrating because we try to reiterate the policy and what is appropriate and inappropriate within this room.
We're always gonna have someone that's gonna be completely upset. They're not gonna care about the procedure, the policy, and you do have to try to intervene with them, and we're not supposed to have the interaction, but the lack of interaction also lets them have a voice that is inappropriate, like they have said, so we do have to put a stop to it. And, and I mean, at some point, if someone is this disruptive, they may not be allowed to come to the district.
So we, we have in code of conduct, approved by the board every year, civility language for kids, teachers, all of us, and visitors. And part of that language does say that you, when you have a grievance, so to speak, you will bring it forward in a respectful tone, and you can agree to disagree. And let's draw some comparisons here. We have a lady who has vigorously fought at all levels to include her kids at the Beethamtown Central School District without vaccination, right? And she rose up at the board and she spoke, I thought eloquently, and totally disagreed with.
She was outstanding. She was outstanding.
She was excellent.
Totally disagreed with our policies, with our enforcement of the law. She was excellent. When you put that in side-by-side comparison to some of the other presentations we've had over the last two years, two years, it's, we've, we've got to be much more cognizant of that in, in Berlin.
I, I agree, and putting some parameters on it seems necessary because, I mean, I get exhausted with these, these shows that we're sometime exposed to and the damage that they can do. So I mean, when should we talk about it? I mean, when do we come up with some? I think it's, like you just threw out some general ideas, and I think they're great. Have a written statement, make sure it's approved, make sure you, no, you can't say this, you can't say this, you can't say this, and if you go beyond those parameters.
There's a policy, there's a policy we can produce it.
Yeah. But I mean, telling these people, this is what our policy is, it's not sinking in.
No.
And they, and they.
And, and it's, it's difficult because I, I've tried.
Until they say it, you can't stop.
Addressing it before the meeting started.
Yeah.
You know, one-on-one, that didn't go over very well.
Yeah. And it makes it just confrontational for you as well as, you know, I, I'd like to take all that out of it somehow, but, but then again, we can't.
Right.
Part of the job is doing this too. I mean, unfortunately, unfortunately, you know, my name gets put in social media, and I mean, I have to accept that being at this table, but I can't accept, I can't accept the formation of the staff.
Yeah, I agree.
And, and, but we also have to be careful that what our policy we put in place doesn't censor, stifle, you know, discussion.
What, I think we definitely should do something. My question is, when, when do we get together and decide?
Do it for policy, because there's a public comment policy we can get. We know the options, we can look at the options, and we can bring it forward.
And Ed, Ed has a lot of connections through NISBA, so it's okay to reach out to NISBA and find out what other options do we have as Board of Education to conduct our public comments? And, and we can create, we can create our own prototype. We don't have to follow another district or, but I don't wanna discourage public comment. I think it's super important, I think our people's opinions are valuable, it helps us stay in tune with the people that we don't see on a regular basis, but they also need to be constructive. And I don't think it's okay to use this as an avenue to over set the hierarchy of the community of our district, so I really think that I can't just be the hammer. It has to be a district approach to it, not just me going, you're done. Sorry.
Yeah, I agree.
I wanted to add before, that was the last from Missolinius.
So we've got some upcoming board meetings. In April, we have an April seventh.
Yes.
We have an April twenty-first, but I also wanna remind everyone that we have people that have committed to the April twenty-third, seven thirty AM, you needing, we need, we don't need everyone there, it would be nice, but we don't need everyone there, but we do definitely need a forum. That's our, our opportunity to elect Ed to go back on CV tech. And if we do not have five, he does not get to do it. So he does an excellent job with CV tech, so we'd like to encourage that relationship. All right, speaking of public comment, is there anyone else that has anything like they'd like to add to Missolinius before we move on? Okay. Seeing that we have set aside a second ten minutes for public comments, if you would like to make a comment at this time, please approach the board. Seeing that there is no one at this time, we will skip Ed reading the policy and move straight to Clark Proten. Any volunteers for Clark? ten. Any volunteers for clerk pro ten tonight? Can we do it? Okay. May be resolved if the Board of Education appoint Ed Merron as clerk pro ten for this meeting. May I have a motion, please?
A motion.
Thank you, Mike. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Nicole. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Noes, abstains, resolution passes. We will be going into executive session. We are not making any more decisions after this.
We will not be having any decisions after this. We are inviting Robert Sordin from CAPRUC to Bozies into executive session. And we are going into executive session for the reasons of collective negotiations and pending litigation. That's on there? It's all, it's on that, actually.
Ooh, all right. May be resolved, the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss Beetham Town staff, support staff associations, collective negotiations pursuant to Article fourteen of civil service law and pending litigation. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Nicole. Second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Noes, abstains, resolution passes.
Executive session will be held in the Beetham Town Room.
For the first time.
Look at that.
Apparently, we're going into the green light, just.
Are they up there?